Good evening, everybody, and welcome to tonight's events and welcome to the College of St. Benedict and St. John's University. We're very happy to welcome Attorney General Keith Ellison to our colleges. We've hosted many, many public officials over the years. We like to provide a forum for students, faculty, staff, the community, and we're just thrilled that you're here tonight. Before we get going, let me thank a few people and talk a little bit about our institutions. So first, thank yous. The Eugene J. McCarthy Center for Public Policy and Civic Engagement, especially Matt Lindstrom, who is there. And I think Victor is here tonight, but Victoria Evans, the Assistant Director, made this possible. Multicultural Student Services, especially Malik Stewart, who I don't see is here yet, but Malik, thank you so much for making this possible. I know one other person who's not here, but I want to thank her publicly is Ashley Kuschel. He's our Department Coordinator for Economics, as well as Computer Science, Math, and Psychology in the entire main building. She helps make this possible, so I thank her very much. And then, even though I see some of them are out in the hall and stuff, I really want to thank the staff at the Gretzky Center and Audiovisual Services who made dinner, served dinner, will clean up after dinner, who set up the room, recorded the event, and they do all of this work to make this possible. Thank you so much. Second thing I want to do is just acknowledge where we are holding this event. Both the College of St. Benedict and St. John's University occupy the original homelands of the Dakota and Anishinaabe peoples. We honor and respect and acknowledge the indigenous peoples forcibly removed from this territory, whose connection remains today. Both St. Benedict's monastery and St. John's Abbey previously operated boarding stools for native children. And now, students, faculty, and staff are working to repair the relationships with our native nation neighbors. Third, I want to introduce Sidney Walker, who will introduce Attorney General Ellison. Sidney is originally from Watertown, South Dakota, so I'll forgive you for that. We were talking about how people from out of state earlier. And she's a senior at CSB, majoring in Political Science and minoring in Economy. She has many accomplishments during her time here, but I'll mention only one. She is the sixth and most recent St. Ben/Saint John student to earn a Truman Scholarship. She's got 58 students in the 2022 class. Now, what is a Truman Scholar? Well, according to the Truman Scholarship Foundation, it was established by Congress in 1975 as the "living memorial" to President Harry S. Truman and as a "national monument" to public service. Truman Scholars demonstrate outstanding leadership potential, a commitment to a career in government or the nonprofit sector, and academic excellence. Each Truman Scholar receives funding for graduate studies, leadership training, career counseling, and special internship and fellowship opportunities within the federal government. I thought that Attorney General Ellison would appreciate. Secretary of State Steve Simon was a 1990 Truman Scholar, but neither of us, I don't know. So, but please welcome Sidney Walker.
So, tonight, with the help of the McCarthy Center and the Multicultural Center, we're lucky to welcome Minnesota Attorney General Keith Ellison to campus for a Town Hall discussion. Attorney General Ellison is a public servant through and through. After completing law school at the University of Minnesota, Ellison practiced civil rights and defense law for more than 15 years before transitioning to elected office, serving five years in the Minnesota House. In 2007, Ellison was elected to represent Minnesota's fifth congressional district in the US House of Representatives, making history as Minnesota's first elected African-American congressional member and the first Muslim elected to either the US House or Senate. During his time on Capitol Hill, he championed consumer, worker, environmental, and civil and human rights protections. In 2018, Mr. Ellison was elected as Minnesota's 30th Attorney General and was reelected again in 2022. As Attorney General, Keith Ellison is the chief legal officer for the state of Minnesota. I will let him speak to his own record during tonight's Town Hall, but in the last few weeks alone, Attorney General Ellison has had a hand in a wide range of topics, including the recent Sanford Fairview Healthcare merger, the Hastings School District Food Service Worker Strike, and the student loan protections, just to name a few. I think it's safe to say that Mr. Ellison is a very busy man, so we're very lucky and fortunate to have him here on campus and have his here for the evening. Please help me in welcoming Attorney General Ellison, especially, I think.
It's on there, yeah. So, always the first thing, isn't it on? Welcome to you again, and welcome to everyone who's here. Before we get started, I just thought I'd see if there's anything you'd like to talk about first before we get into some questions. I'm gonna ask you a couple, and we're gonna open everything up so that anybody who wants to ask questions can ask questions. But if you'd like to start out with a few remarks.
Well, thank you, thank you, and thank you for inviting me. I remember only a few weeks ago, you and I were talking, and I was like, hey, you know, why don't you invite me up? Because I invited myself up, right? And you were gracious enough to put on this wonderful meeting, and I just want to say thank you. Can we get it together for our professor, everybody? Join you in thanking all the folks who made this evening happen. We really are grateful that you helped pull this together. I also notice for student and community out here, that's a really great thing. We want to just lift up the importance of the intergenerational exchange, you know? Young people have a lot of great ideas, and some of us folks who've been around got a few gray hairs and a little wisdom, hopefully, and it's important for us to share that together, right? So that's a very important thing. And I just want to say that these kind of conversations, community meetings, are critical to the cause of democracy and that it is important that we discuss with each other, hopefully respectfully, but it's not necessary that we agree with each other. What is necessary, that we remember that all of us love this country and this state, even if we have different points of view on how to make it a better place. Let me say this, at the Attorney General's Office, one of the missions that I'm on is to help everybody understand what the Attorney General's Office does. The Attorney General's Office, I am the chief legal officer, but I'm not the chief law enforcement officer. The Attorney General is not the top cop in Minnesota law. That would be the Department of Public Safety Commissioner. But I do set legal policy for the state, and I do it and have the responsibility to manage a certain portfolio of work that I'd like to tell you about. But before I go any further, I'd like to let you know that if you feel that you've ever been cheated or scammed or defrauded, or if you feel that, you know, that something you paid for, you didn't get it, or you didn't get it in the right format, or that if you purchase something and then they tap on an extra fee, if you feel that that has ever happened to you, you can call the Attorney General's Office. And the number is, y'all ready? Because I know somebody will say, wait, 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 I gotta get my phone. The number is 651-296-3353. And let me tell you, we have helped, there was not too long ago, there were people who paid for in-ground pools. And then the people who sold them the pools never provided the pools. We sued them, and we got people's money back. Then there were people who paid for solar panels. They didn't get the solar panels, we sued them. And then, so, and then there were the folks in Northfield who were, their property, their, the manufactured housing park that they live in was bought by a company that started imposing brand-new restrictions, which is not consistent with Minnesota law. We intervened in that to protect those folks, so that they could live in their homes based on the agreements that they had, consistent with their lease. And I could go on and on and on. We recently sued for some fraudulent student loan debt conduct, and we've done a lot of that. And so, we do this kind of stuff all the time. You may have heard about the Kia lawsuit. We're going to trial against a company called Jewel within a few weeks, because Jewel promises that their product is safe and not dangerous to, and this is not true, and we're gonna prove it in court. And so, this is the kind of thing that we do every day. If you feel, and I'm gonna tell you this, the number one reason people get, somehow get scammed and continue to get scammed is because they feel embarrassed, and they say to themselves, how could I be so stupid? How could I agree to that? How come I didn't see that that was happening? Well, these people are professional liars, and you shouldn't feel bad about it. I was talking to a woman just last night complaining to me that she met some guy online, and he was so charming and nice, and he borrowed money from her, and she lent it to him, and she borrowed money, he borrowed more. And next thing you know, he said that if you help me with a certain bill, I'm about to sell my house, and if you can help me with some bills, then as soon as I sell the house, I'll pay you. And, you know, can we do, can we do it that way? This is called a romance scam. This is called a romance scam. And so now, we opened up a file, and we're gonna try to help her get her money back. She lost $400,000. So what I'm saying is, your Attorney General's Office is there to help protect consumers. You should know about it, tell a friend. I hope you never need the number I just gave you, but if you do, you do. The other thing that we do is we represent every state agency. And there are over 100 boards, commissions, and different sort of boards, commissions, and agencies that we represent. We are not the primary decision-maker in those entities. That is the Commissioner, that is the Board Chair, that is the Commissioner. But we do represent them legally. So we represent the Department of Corrections, the Department of Veterans Affairs. We represent, you know, the Board of Medical Licensing. This is another very intensive amount of work we do. We also defend the laws of the state of Minnesota, unless they're unconstitutional or preempted by federal law. And so, we have something called the Solicitors Group, who does nothing but appellate law and either defends Minnesota statutes, or in rare, very rare occasions says, well, actually, that law is unconstitutional or preempted by federal law. So we do that. I'm also on the Pardon Board. So myself, the Chief Justice of the Supreme Court, and Governor Walz sit on the Pardon Board. People who have committed crimes have the right, under Minnesota law, to approach the Pardon Board and ask for clemency, which includes two things. One is a pardon, the other one is a commutation of sentence. And that's another one of my duties. And look, if you've never seen a Pardon Board hearing, I recommend that you do. They're always dramatic, not everybody gets a pardon, some, a lot of people are denied, many people do get them. But there are folks, many of whom did things that were incredibly bad, and when they were 18, 19, 20, getting now are 40, and they're like, look, you know, I've always wanted to go hunting with my grandson, and I can't because I got a felony, because I broke into somebody's farm, and, you know, I got caught, and I've always been embarrassed, and would you guys give me a pardon? So this is, so this is a dramatic human drama that unfolds right in front of folks. If you're ever interested in criminal justice, crime and punishment, watching the Pardon Board here is worth the time. It's worth, it's even worth a trip to the Twin Cities to watch it, if some of the students here might have an interest. And the last thing I'll tell you about is the State Board of Investment. Now, as you know, people who work for the state of Minnesota, if they're lucky, they get older. And when they get older, some of them retire. When they retire, they get a pension from the state. The assets that are invested on their behalf is something called the State Board of Investment, and I'm required to sit on that as Attorney General. So that's kind of, and there, you know, it's funny about that, because I didn't really even, I didn't run for AG to be on that board, but it ends up being pretty engaged, you know? Because people who are concerned about climate policy will come and say Minnesota should divest from fossil fuels. Or somebody might have a strong objection to an investment, maybe Minnesota's invested in Ukraine, and somebody will say, well, we are very angry at Vladimir Putin. We don't want to, you know, we don't want to, you know, support Russia because of their war in Ukraine, so we should divest from those investments. And people are entitled to come and share whatever their thoughts are, and we listen to it and do our best. But our responsibility is to make sure that the pension pays off for the pensioner, not to do politics. You know, that's really what we're there for, but we still are there to hear folks out. So with that, I'll hand it back to you, and you can answer some questions. But that's just sort of preliminary thing about what the AG's office does, and I hope you make use of it, because it's there for you.
Thank you. Now, that's something, we just, we don't know necessarily what all of our state officers do, and we sometimes, we had a really nice conversation with students before this. What's the difference between the state Attorney General and the federal Attorney General, all the Secretary of State, and those kinds of things? Those are important things to know. I really want to emphasize that I want to have questions tonight. So I've got a couple here that I'm gonna ask, and then I'm gonna go out into the audience. It looks like I can actually make this joke tonight. I'm gonna be Phil Donahue. Does anybody remember Phil Donahue? Yeah, okay, you're old enough to remember. He's the guy who go out the audience with the microphone and let people ask questions. So I'm gonna be Phil Donahue tonight, but first, just like Phil, he got to always ask some questions first. So, the first thing I want to look at is something that I'm really interested in as an economist, which is the Sanford Fairview Healthcare mergers. Sanford Health System and Fairview Health Systems have announced their intention to merge. The University of Minnesota has asked that as part of any merger, the current arrangements between the U and Fairview be dissolved, and in particular, that the university hospital return to university ownership. We have a lot of students who are interested in getting involved in healthcare. We have a lot of members of the community who work in healthcare. All of us need healthcare for ourselves, so I have a couple of questions on that. And you can ask and answer them both at the same time if you'd like. What role, first of all, do you and your office have in any of this, in evaluating it? And secondly, have you and your office formed any opinions on this merger? I know you've been going around the state doing some listening sessions, especially about the role of the university hospital in all of this.
Well, let me tell you, I'm not in a position to publicly announce our conclusions at this point. But I will tell you that we have a very active investigation going on. And you're right, we've been, we've had four community meetings, one in Bemidji, one in Grand Rapids, one in Worthington, and the other one in, boy, one more, oh, Say Paul. And so we've had community meetings, they were all full. We opened up a special online place to locate for people to share comments. We've gotten over 5,000 separate communications. And we also have a private, which is a non-public investigation by statute. The statute says that this investigation is not public information. But I will tell you a few things, we have demanded documents from all three parties concerned, university, Sanford, and Fairview. And we have now started to do depositions of interested individuals. And so that's the work that we're doing. And what are we trying to figure out? We're trying to figure out two things. One, from an antitrust standpoint, will the merged entity reduce competition? Will it lead to such consolidation that there's market power available to the merged entity where they can dictate price, dictate insurance rates? Will they, will they be able to? They are not, they're both nonprofit organizations, you should know that. And so, that's our issue. Will, will this merger have the negative effects often associated with mergers? Which is higher price, lower services, what will happen? So, and I would submit to you all that when we look at why the American economy over the last 50, 60 years has generated as much wealth, if not more, than it has in the past, but yet we have such wide disparities in income and wealth generation, my answer to you is market consolidation, and the consolidation of markets and monopoly and oligopoly power. So that, and if you look at it, and there's not one industry you can't name where we have incredible market concentration. But way back in the 19, in the 1890s, we started regulating markets with the Sherman Act. Then we had the Clayton Act, then we had the FTC Act. Then we had something called the Stockyard and Packers Act. And all of these were designed to make sure that market, that no big entity could form, that could dictate prices to everybody else. And this was a big deal in Minnesota, because if you're a Minnesota farmer, and you had to get your grain to market, and the railroad, it was only one railroad, it was owned by one guy, and he would say, ah, what's the price of moving your grain? How much you got? You're gonna pay whatever I say. And if you don't want it, you don't want to pay me, that grain can sit right there, okay? And you better figure out how to come up with my money. And so, Congress passed laws that say you cannot, you know, you can't, you can't, we're gonna regulate you to make sure you don't do that to folks. And then there was, and then there was, there's been a whole series of regulations. And we had fairly robust antitrust legislation and enforcement right up until, I would say, I'd say the 1980s, right up until the 80s, you know? But then, the 80s, you know, what happened is a change in philosophy. There was this philosophy about markets that said, we're going to, it was called the Brandeis approach. Remember, there was a, there was a famed judge named Louis Brandeis, and he said, we're gonna look at how this merger affects everybody, the workers, the small business owners, the big, the other competitors. And then it switched over to something called consumer welfare, where they said, we're only gonna look at consumer price in the short term. And of course, any monopolist who buys up everybody is going to do what? They're gonna lower the price to run everybody out of business, and then run, lower the price below where others can even compete, run them out of business, and then jack up the price after they either run you out of business or bought you out. But anyway, that's what we've been living with for the last six 1980s, I would say. And now, there's an awakening of how consolidated markets can be very bad for consumers, but also for workers. Remember, if there's only one seller in the market, then there's only one buyer of labor. And if there's only one, and then one company town, and can you negotiate for your wages to be higher? Not really, if you got one company, you can't sell one to the other company. So these are the things we're concerned about when it comes to this merger. Now, we're also concerned about something that is equally important, and I'm gonna try to be quick explaining it. They're both nonprofits. The Attorney General's Office has to regulate charitable organizations. They all have to register with the Attorney General's Office, and the Attorney General's Office has to make sure that the trust assets, the charitable assets, are used for their intended purpose. Now, and they have to be operated for the people who they were intended to benefit. Now, the charitable assets of the state of Minnesota is supposed to benefit the people of the state of Minnesota. But this entity is gonna be operated out of Sioux Falls, South Dakota. So, what does it mean if a CEO in South Dakota is telling vast numbers of Minnesotans what their healthcare is gonna be? Is that a problem? Well, maybe, you know, and that's part of what we're researching right now. So, let me just tell you, at the end of the day, we're gonna come up with what is the best thing for the people of the state of Minnesota. I can tell you, there's been a few things that I've concerned, gotten concerned about along the way. One of the things that I'm quite concerned about is the, is on, is the effect that will occur with regard to, you know, workers, nurses in particular. You know, nurses in Minnesota are heavily unionized, in South Dakota, they're not. People have a right to be at a union, and Minnesota has a history of respecting workers to come together. If the institution, the merged institution is operated out of a right-to-work state, how's that gonna affect workers here? That's something that has crossed my mind and made me a little worried. And, you know, the other thing is, is that I've been quite concerned that, that quite honestly, Fairview has lost a lot of money. And the Board of Directors has a responsibility to make sure that the institution is operating in a solvent manner. And there's at least an argument that they have not insisted that the institution be operated in a solvent manner. And so, and so we're not gonna let them make a decision around a merger. Is that going to be in the best interest of Minnesotans? So I'm not, so notice how I have not come down to any firm conclusions, but one thing I will absolutely promise you, you can mark my words, and I can see that we're on tape, so you will be able to prove it. A time will come in the near future where I will say definitively what our conclusions are. Now, you asked another very important question, what, what is our role, what is our authority? It is review and sue, or, or not. Review and sue or not. So if we find that they have violated a Minnesota statute, we're gonna sue them. If we find that they have done, they have not, we're not going to sue them. And I'll tell you, there's a whole lot of things that are not good, but are not illegal. And so, we're gonna continue to do our due diligence. I wish we had the right to approve of the merger, we don't. We can sue, and we can review and sue, or not.
I think a lot of people have, have the impression that somehow the state of Minnesota, through the Attorney General's Office or some other office, has approval, and there just isn't any. It doesn't work that way.
That's correct. If there's a violation of, now, they're saying they're gonna merge on like May 31st. I'm telling you that that's not enough time for us to interview everybody. We gotta interview and review all the documents we gotta review. If they try to rush us, they're gonna find themselves in court, and they know it. So I'm hoping that they continue to negotiate with us.
Well, I just want to switch the topic here a little bit. We've got a lot of students here, we've got a lot of former students here, graduates and now people. I went to your website, and it has a whole section devoted to student loans. And as you well know, the Biden Administration's Loan Forgiveness Program right now is tied up in litigation. And it's leaving borrowers in limbo about their situation, whether it's gonna happen or not. So, same thing, got two questions for you. What role does your office have in dealing with student loans, in particular, student loan debt forgiveness? And then, what do you see as the big issues involved in this whole thing, especially with respect to Minnesota?
Yeah, so, again, thank you for the question, it is a very important question. And there's a lot to be said about it, but I'm gonna zero right in on what you're asking. Our role with regard to student loans is where we find that there is deception, dishonesty, steering, some sort of illegality in the administration of student loans. We will sue the entity that's doing it, and we will try to get disgorgement, refunds, loan forgiveness for students, and we've done it for a number of institutions. And we've done it from, we've sued Navient, we've sued the Globe College of Business. There's so many that I can't even list them all, I'd need a list in front of me. But all of them boiled down to a few things. Not telling students terms that then they come back and insist upon. Or if, in the case of Navient, there was, if you couldn't pay your student loan, you had two avenues. You could do forbearance, which means I'll start paying next month. What they didn't tell students is that the interest would still keep ticking. Or you can get students into a loan forgiveness program, and they never, and they didn't tell students about that. And so, we showed that they were steering students into forbearance, which was just mounting their debt, and then acting like it was some big favor they were doing to the, for the students. So that, so these are the kind of things we're doing. And then, like we already talked about Minnesota College of Business. So they were saying, we're gonna give you a law enforcement degree, you're gonna be able to be a police officer, probation officer. And students, and don't worry about, the money, we'll lend you the money, and then you pay it back as you work. Well, they did not have a certificate program to award these degrees. So they're sending students into a program that they can, they can never fulfill the promise, even if the students got straight A's in every single class, they They didn't have the authority to issue that degree or certificate. And yet they made students incur debt based on that. And then, you know, we, you know, we had dealt with the advocacy stuff, I mean, there's just so many. Now, let me just, uh, talk to you about the big, what's the thing about student loans? Now, we were talking before, like, I'm, I'm creeping, I was born in nineteen sixty-three, and I'm creeping up one sixty in my, uh, in, in August. And I can tell you that when I went to college, I could've worked construction in the summertime, and then work a campus job, and pretty much paid for my student, student, student tuition. It wasn't that, it was not that heavy. Nowadays, that's just not reality for students. I mean, um, when I graduated from law school, law school, my entire student loan debt was twelve thousand dollars. Students picked that up in a semester. And when I graduated from law school in nineteen ninety, kids graduating from law school today, they may look like they're making more money, but when you adjust for inflation, they're making less money, on average. So what I'm saying to you is that this is a tougher economy for our twenty-one-year-olds, twenty-two-year-olds than it was for twenty-one and twenty-two-year-olds back in nineteen eighty-five and eighty-two and eighty-three. And so what happened? Well, in my opinion, um, people in the financial services industry basically looked at students as a profit center, monetized them, and said, look, we can make a lot of money off this if we got into the student loan business. Uh, because the kids, they have no sense of money, so they don't mind borrowing a googaboo dough, and they all think they're gonna be millionaires anyway, so it doesn't really matter how much they borrow. The parents, we can get them to, to, to co-sign it, because every parent dreams for their kids to go to college. We've convinced kids that there's something not as cool in being a carpenter, an electrician, a, a, you know, a, a, and, you know, a, a well-paying, good profession, but with your hands. We kinda told our kids, college is where it's at, that other stuff is not. And as a result, our kids, since they wanna please us, they have given up everything so they can go to Harvard and Yale and Princeton and Brown or University of Minnesota. And so we created this massive student loan debt. Some have made a lot of money. And don't get me wrong, some people should go to college. If, I mean, some people should go to college, but we shouldn't tell our kids that you're not a success unless you go to college. That's garbage. And, and, and so, and so, you know, I can tell you, there's plumbers out there making more money than you guys will after you get out of here. And I, and I'm gonna tell you, I know some plumbers who went to college, and then decided to go into the trades because it paid more. And they wanted to, so this, so we've gotta reconsider how we do this. And, you know, let me just say this, there was a time, I mean, I think, I think education is a public good. A socially beneficial public good. If you train somebody, if we invest as a society in some, and you becoming a nurse, and what you do is you do tests on, I don't know, um, prostate cancer tests. You're adding years of life to somebody so that that person can go from being a parent to a grandparent to maybe a great-grandparent. Because you caught, you caught that prostate in time so that that guy could get the treatment that he needed, so he'll be around for his daughter's wedding, maybe his granddaughter's wedding. How much, what is that worth to you? And it's all because that young lady is a nurse, because she went to a school and you paid her taxes, and that ended up being helping her to get her education, is that worth it? I think it is worth it. There's another philosophy that says, she's gonna make the salary, she better pay the debt for the students. And we're not paying. Cut student, cut the appropriations to the state college and university, that's her problem. And now she has tons of debt, now she can't work at the community clinic, she's gotta go find the highest-paying job she can get, even if that's not really where she wants to go. So now we gotta have a special program to get people to go do nursing in rural communities, and we got a rural health crisis. I'm telling you, we're making a big mistake as it relates to public edu, as it relates to any kind of education. And I believe in private schools, I believe in public schools, I believe we need both. Both public, both benefit from public subsidy at some level or another. But we're like, look, we don't wanna pay any taxes, well, you know, you're gonna pay one way or another. Cause if you don't wanna pay no taxes, then we're not, then she doesn't get to be a nurse maybe. And then nobody's gonna catch your prostate, and then people are gonna be having a funeral as opposed to a wedding, where you get to walk your daughter down the aisle. Is this too real for y'all? You understand what I'm trying to say? Does anybody get what I'm, what I'm trying to go there? So it makes sense to invest in public education, it's not welfare.
And that's why, as another important part here at St. John St. Ben's is we also have the Minnesota Grant Program, because we do that to invest in private schools, too.
We need both, we need both.
We invest public dollars in both.
We should, and we, and we need to do more, and I'm telling you, there's certain, I believe that there should be markets that are regulated so that we don't concentrate wealth into few hands. But if you start, if you get a great idea and you start a business, you're making better hot dogs than everybody else, you sell a lot, you make a lot of money, good for you, I got no problem with that. But then I say, but you know what? The people who work there, they were educated in public schools, we gotta pay for the education of your workers. You wanna kick in for that? Or what about the road you drove in on? Or what about the water you drank that you could drink because somebody looked at it? What about the internet? Which was invented by DARPA, which is a Defense Department agency, which is the government. Bill Gates didn't, did not come up with, with the internet, y'all. Neither did Steve Jobs, neither did Zuckerberg, none of them did. They made gazillions off of it, but the investment for that institution, which has changed the world, was a public investment. GPS public investment. I'm telling you, this idea that government's bad and always wrong is wrong. It's also wrong that the government should control everything. We should have private sector where you can do your own thing. Why not have both? America has always had both. But we kinda went to war, public sector versus private sector for a few years, and it was always a stupid war. And we need to get along and say some things we do together, some things you, you work it on your own.
I had another question, but I think it's more important to start asking the audience some questions, and I'm gonna take advantage. I'd like to get a student question first.
It's Blyat, eh?
Oh, well, I actually promised him first. I had a, it's not a ring, I'm not gonna call you over here. And if you could, if you could identify who you are, just to introduce yourself.
Hi, Attorney General Allison, my name is Cormac.
Hey. So. Again, Cormac.
Good to see you again as well. Um, my question is, as you most likely know, yesterday President Biden approved the controversial Willa Project, um, in Alaska. As the state attorney general, what are you going to do to ensure that Minnesota's native communities and lands, as well as state-owned lands, are protected from being developed by companies for the purpose of extraction of fossil fuels and extraction of other natural yet limited resources?
Well, let me just tell you, I definitely believe that we need to promote, um, green energy sources and renewable, Minnesota doesn't have any coal. You know, and I think we should invest in wind and solar. I think we should invest in, um, conservation, we should make our buildings much more efficient in the energy that they, you know, we try to reduce that, we should promote EV and, uh, and, you know, you know, we shouldn't make people get electronic, electric cars, but we should certainly make sure there's enough, uh, fueling stations, uh, for them. And I think that, uh, there's a whole number of things we can do. I mean, I think, I support his governor's goals, uh, in the plan that he did, legislature just passed, and I, uh, and, uh, and I can tell you this, uh, thermal coal is increasingly becoming not a very good investment. I mean, if you look at the price point for wind and for solar, it's getting more, it's just getting straight up economically better to use green renewable sources. And then there's other ways to make energy that we haven't even really tapped yet. There's a whole world of kinetic energy. This guy was showing me how, if you, if you put this strip in the middle of the road, that you would drive over it, it would be even less dramatic than a speed bump. Something about the, the, the rolling over of that car generate, it hits a piston and it literally generates energy. And we should, uh, in that, we should get our students and our scholars to think about more ways how to, how to not burn these fossil fuels. And, uh, I can tell you that, uh, I think that, uh, if there's one industry that has enjoyed dramatics, um, dramatic, um, investment, um, uh, in, in subsidy, uh, from the government, it has been the fossil fuel industry. Um, we, uh, they, they've gotten far more, um, subsidy from the government than, uh, than, than green energy has. And so I just think that we should just do equal, actually, or even. And, and, and we should, we shouldn't invest in industries where, you know, the, the price point is high and the externalities are high. When I mean say, when I say externalities, I mean, when you burn, when, when you sell that fossil fuel, the people who sold it, Exile Mobile keeps the money, but the, all the problems connected to it, everybody else has to cope with. And that, that's not fair, right? So we're really not paying the true price cause the, because there's a whole lot of price that they don't ever have to pay, they just make us, they just let society have to deal with it in the form of, um, um, you know, greenhouse gas emission and, um, other things like that. So I think it is important, it is important, I will say this, though. I think it's not necessarily realistic to think that we are going to get our fossil fuels in a fingersnap. There has to be some form of transition. And that, I think we need to have, I mean, we need to think about worker training. If you're working in the fossil fuel industry, we can't just abandon people. We can't just abandon West Virginia, folks, they're our fellow Americans. Um, and we need to think about that. I, I'd also say, too, that, um, I think that, you know, I think that the, the fossil fuel companies have to play a, a, a role in mitigating this, this crisis. That's why I filed a lawsuit against Exile Mobile. It was because in nineteen seventy-nine, scientists were saying to the big oil companies, we think that your product is warming up the earth and it's causing problems. They said, this is absolutely not true, it's a lie, and they, they, they spent a multi-million dollar campaign to say it wasn't true. They get sued. In discovery, we find out that they, not only did they know about it, that they had changed the construction of their oil-producing equipment, uh, like their rigs, to withstand global climate change. So they're lying. And they said, yeah, our product is causing these problems, but it also has a lot of beneficial effects, how did you get to work this morning? We say, okay, 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 fine, what are we gonna, what are we gonna do together? And they didn't, but if they'd have told the truth, we could've sort of got a plan and got thirty years' head start. And we wouldn't have punished them because of what they did because of us to admit it, you know? Fossil fuels have helped advance the modern industrial economy. They've also caused negative effects, too. We could've worked on that, but they just said, we're just gonna tell them some lies until we get caught. And that is not fair and unacceptable, so that's why we're taking them to court. So that's, so, so we gotta work on it, we've got a lot to do. I can tell you this, uh, thank you for all those stuff you do to recycle. Um, I can tell you that, uh, you know, that, um, that, that automobiles are not the only source of greenhouse gas emissions, methane is a big cause. Uh, and I can tell you that, uh, landfills yield methane, uh, a lot of, uh, clearing our, uh, a lot of cattle production causes, causes methane. And we gotta think about this, um, I'm not saying you can't have a hamburger, I'm just saying that we've gotta think about, uh, how we do all these things and the way that we move forward in the world. And, um, I, I definitely think that, uh, I, I believe the world can save itself, you know, but we've gotta decide to. Thanks for the question.
Thank you.
Uh, Jeff McManus, WJON here in St. Cloud.
Hey, Jeff.
Uh, dovetailing on that question, uh, the Sherco two power plant in Becker is set to depower in the next uh, twenty-four months or so. Uh, in reporting on those stories, a lot of people have asked, where will the power that Sherco generates now come from? I don't claim to be a genius in the ways of energy transmittal, but the math does not work. Uh, the hole created by the depowering of the Sherco power plant will be greater than the Minnesota Connect Power Line coming from the renewable energy sources in southwest Minnesota. I can't get any regional vice president from Xcel Energy to go on the record and say, don't worry, in two years, when you flip on the switch, there will be power. If we find ourselves in rolling blackouts or a power deficit between where we are now and where we need to be in the future, do the state residents of Minnesota or the state themselves have an avenue of recourse?
Well, let me tell you. I'm just gonna tell you this, there's always recourse and redress, even at the ballot box, right? So, but I think that it is important, uh, to, to first of all, tell you that while I did not come to prepare to answer that question, uh, I got people on my staff who can give you a lot of answers about that. We have a whole group that called the Residential Utilities, uh, Division. And all they do is appear in front of the PUC on these issues, right? So what I'll say is, um, why don't you give us a call over there, and I'll put you in touch with some people who really know this stuff, uh, in and out. And I'll also say, look, Xcel is a regulated utility, uh, and they do have a responsibility to help power our state. Um, they are, they are on an hourly, as you know. And, uh, they, they have, therefore subject to regulation. And I think it's, uh, fair for you to get the answers you need. Uh, have you tried the Data Practices Act? Have you, are there, what, what are the sources of information that you might be able to pursue to get good answers to the questions that you're asking? Cause I, quite honestly, um, I think if you're asking and you're a news person, there's probably a lot of people who wanna know the answer to that question. And they want some assurances, because if the answer is, don't worry, be happy, fine, just show it, right, right? I mean, you're open, are you, you're open to a persuasive argument, right? If it adds up, but if it doesn't, let's not find out in the two, in two years. Let's, let's start dealing, let's start dealing with the problem now. So, wish I had great answers for you on this, I just, I, that kind of question I probably would've had to study up uh, on before I tried to answer it. But if you want, uh, the guy standing in the back key, I understand, which is, you know, cause you could, put him in touch with Joe Meyer at the R and D Group, and we'll try to see if we can get you some answers, okay? Thanks a lot, sir.
Hi, my name is Ron Vanster, and.
Good to see you, Ron.
You too. Um, I've been asked by state representatives this question, they don't seem to be able to answer the question, it seems to be fuzzy, they don't know what's going on. Just recently, we voted for the driver's licenses for illegals. Uh, when we look at that, they don't seem to know or understand how that bill was passed because, first of all, there's no identification on the license to where, there's no, you, you, you know, there's nothing that says they can't vote, there's nothing other that says they have a criminal record against them, that they can't buy weapons, if they have a pedophile or any type of, there's nothing that indicates anything other that separates them from being like you and I driving down the streets. So they get, basically according to that, they get the same privileges as you and I do, whether it be voting, buying guns, buying fishing license. We don't know how long they're gonna be here, so basically it's kind of an amnesty, uh, license. But with that said, the law that was passed, and being that you're an attorney and you're, you're attorney general, the law that was passed, um, if you look at US Code eight thirteen twenty-four AB and C one two three, it says emphatically that you cannot aid and abet, harbor, or conceal, or knowingly know that an illegal is in your, in your state illegally without a ten-thousand-dollar fine. So with that law set and stated, it says you cannot aid and abet by, by the lawmakers allowing that bill to pass. They aided and abetted, they concealed, and they're harboring, just according to that law itself. And the second part of that, my question to you is, no state representative can answer, if we gave them a licenses to go from point A to point B, you know, to drive on the streets, there's another law that says, um, the E-verification, you, is not lawful to work in the state of Minnesota under E-Verify. So when, and, and let's say an illegal drives from point A to point B, they get to the place of employment, and they don't pass the E-Verify, because that's a totally separate law from license, it's a totally separate law, it's a federal law. Now it says, okay, he's not legal to be in the state, he could drive, but he's not legal to be here in the country. That means they're not legal to work in Minnesota, that never passed. So we give the privileges to illegals to drive our streets, but we didn't give them the privilege to work. So if I came to you and said, Joe Farmer over here has hired five, six, seven, ten illegals, and he knowingly knows he's illegal because he didn't do the E-Verify, would you then arrest him and fine the farmer ten thousand dollars per head, because that's what the law states? As a guy who took the oath, would you? As a guy who took the oath, would you say, yes, Mr. Farmer, he's legal to drive the streets, yes, but he's not legal to work in this state? Would you then fine that farmer ten thousand dollars per head?
Yeah, let me, let me answer your question. So first of all, you, you should know that the only time that the attorney general could criminally prosecute anyone is if the county refers the case to me. There are eighty-seven counties in the state of Minnesota. I cannot and have no legal right or jurisdiction or authority to just prosecute cases wherever I want, not criminal cases. Now, you may say, well, Keith, we know you prosecuted the officers who killed George Floyd. How did you do that? Well, the governor appointed me and the county asked me to do it. So that's how I got involved in those cases. So in terms of finding anyone for anything, I can't do it until there's a referral. And then also, the statute you identified is a federal statute. I, no, no prosecutor in the state of Minnesota can, can enforce a federal statute. State prosecutors enforce state laws. Federal prosecutors enforce federal laws. That would be in the jurisdiction of Mr. Andy Luber. So you'd have to call him about that. But even a prosecutor doesn't investigate cases. You'd have to call the FBI or the, uh, you know, the, the federal immigration authorities. Now, I personally, uh, have to say that I think it's a good idea for people to be able to drive cars based only on proof that they can operate a motor vehicle safely and have insurance. I don't, I don't, I don't think that the state of Minnesota should be a immigration enforcement agency. I think the immigration enforcement, uh, agency should enforce their own laws that they have jurisdiction to enforce. That's not the jurisdiction of the Department of Motor Vehicles. The Department of Motor Vehicles should make sure that people can drive, they have a license, they pass the test, and that they have insurance. And that is what driver's licenses are for. Now you should know, uh, that you cannot vote because of a driver's license. Sixteen-year-olds have driver's licenses, they cannot vote, right? So just because someone has a driver's license does not mean they can vote. Uh, as it relates to immigration policy and working, it, it, you know, look, I think our immigration system needs to be, uh, repaired. I can tell you now that, uh, you know, our immigration, uh, program, I think has got a lot of flaws in it. And one of which is that we have a lot of needs, we have a worker shortage in Minnesota. I think we've got a one point five percent unemployment. I don't think it would hurt us if we allowed people who wanna come here, come here and do jobs, right? And so I think that the, the, the immigration system should adjust itself so that people don't have to fear, right, that they're operating outside of, of authorization. So I, that's what I have to say about it. And, uh, it's good to see you again. I remember when we were having a community forum on hate crimes and you were present there. And so it's good to see you again. All right.
I have a question back here.
My name is Jerry Horgan, I have a two-part question. The Star Tribune had an editorial where Governor Dayton and Governor Palente argued against this merger. First question I could ask, did that have any effect or do you think that'll have any effect? And the second part is, you talked about you dealing with cheaters and as a Viking fan, I feel cheated that they got rid of Adam Thielen. Could you de-summarize that?
Adam Thielen, Adam Thielen was great, wasn't he? I loved watching him play football. But I'm gonna tell you, if I was Adam Thielen, I would, uh, take my thirty-three-year-old body and, uh, do something else, you know? But I think he's been picked up already. I'm not sure, but, um, yeah, I loved watching him play ball. Uh, yeah, I'm sure that, uh, Governor, uh, Palente and Governor Dayton, uh, had an impact with their words. Uh, they're both, they've both been around the block and they both know what they're talking about. And they both, uh, were eloquent when it came to the importance of the academic health mission of the University of Minnesota Hospital. And remember, the University of Minnesota Hospital, it's not about charging as much as you can, get them out as fast as you can. The university academic health, uh, health, uh, hospital is to help train doctors. Seventy percent of all doctors in Minnesota went to University of Minnesota Medical School. We, and, and you can't train somebody to be a good doctor if all you care about is efficiency. You, and so they were very eloquent in that regard. And I was proud to see two guys, one Republican, one Democrat, working together for the benefit of Minnesota. Thank God, hallelujah for that. And they showed what we should be doing a lot more nowadays. So thanks for raising that up.
Question up front here. Actually, I'll go here first and then.
Thank you for, uh, thank you for coming tonight, Mr. Ellison. It's a great honor to have you on campus. Uh, one thing I'd like to know is what your department, or as you as attorney general, is doing to protect queer and LGBT rights? Uh, I know recently in the cities, there was an attack on a trans individual that was really harrowing to read in the Star Tribune and other local newspapers. And I'm wondering, as you as a very high-ranking government official, what can I know so that my friends can be protected and feel safe within the state, especially within the Midwest? Being very conservative when it comes to queer rights and we just achieve sanctuary status as a state? So how is your office and job going to help make sure that that stays maintained?
Let me tell you, I, I tell all of my staff every single day that our job is to help people afford their lives and live with dignity, safety, and respect. Now, look. We have neighbors who are straight, gay, lesbian, transgender, bisexual. They're not hurting anyone, they have the right to walk the streets, get an apartment, have a job. Nobody should bother them. I, I would, I'm, I just don't understand this thing about anti-trans people these days. Uh, but it's, it's out there, but I don't, I don't get what it's coming from, because I, I, I'm a criminal prosecutor. I prosecute people who commit crimes. I put people in prison who commit murder, manslaughter, criminal sexual conduct, and all kinds of crimes. I have no, I'm not shy about it. I don't celebrate it, because I think anyone losing their freedom is sad, but I think a crime victim is even sadder. I don't run into trans people committing crimes all over the place. I don't see it, it doesn't come up. It's a lot of straight people who commit crimes, some gay people commit crimes. But I don't, I don't get like, we gotta get after these trans people. I don't understand why. They let them live. America, we stand up, we sit a pledge of allegiance. And what do we say? We say, at the end of it, we say, and liberty and justice for, except trans. That's not in there. That's not in there. Trans people get to be themselves as all of us do. And so that's a value statement. What am I doing about it? What I'm speaking on, just like I just did. Uh, we also, you know, um, uh, we, there was a situation where a blood bank was saying that it would not, uh, accept transgender people's blood. I'm like, look, if the blood has, um, some sort of a dangerous thing in it, I don't care if it's straight or trans or whatever you are, it should not be in the, in the system. But you can't say, cause this person is trans, they can't. You can be celibate and be trans and your blood can be, is cleaner than a whole lot of other people, right? So just the trans existence of being trans is not a health risk or anything else. And, well, we don't have any proof that trans people are more dangerous than anyone else. But we do have proof that trans people are victims more than other people. Killed often, murdered, a lot of trans youth commit suicide. And I think what we really need to do is make sure that we have a more welcoming society and understand and look. And this is a statistical fact. About ninety-eight, maybe ninety-nine and a half percent of all people identify with a, with, with the sex that they are born as. But about one and a half percent, maybe a little more, maybe a little less, are just different. They're just, and that's okay. And that's fine. And can we, what about, what about kindness, what about love, what about tolerance? What about, you know, I don't know, man. I'm, 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 I'm here to tell you this. If I find somebody committing a hate crime against a transgender person and if, and if the county prosecutor says prosecute this person, I will, I will hold that person accountable to the full extent of the law. So there's that.
I have a question up here. Jerry McCarter, nineteen seventy-one grad, St. Charles University.
All right.
Proud of it. Um, you obviously oversee not-for-profits. The Otto Brimmer Foundation is a wonderful philanthropic organization in the state of Minnesota. Its trustees, there are only three of them, are among the most highly compensated trustees of any not-for-profit. Are you involved or aware of that oversight of, of that organization? It seems to me the compensation that's being paid to those three trustees is excessive.
Thanks for the question. Um, so, is it Jerry?
Jerry.
Jerry asked about the Otto Brimmer Foundation. Um, about three years ago, the Otto Brimmer Foundation, uh, we received, we began to receive complaints from the charitable community, the nonprofit community, we began to see, we received complaints about compensation and also about other things. There was also a situation where the folks at Junior Achievement received a call from one of the trustees and was told that if you don't operate in a way that I want you to, we're not gonna fund your organization. And, uh, and they were even told, if you don't call the attorney general's office and call it and get him to back off my, their investigation, you might not fund it. And then we found a whole bunch of other facts. We investigated, just like I explained to you, how we will send interrogatories out, those are written questions. We'll send up a document demands out, they gotta give them back the documents. And we will call people in for depositions. We did that with Otto Brimmer. And we asked, uh, and we, what we, and we came to a conclusion. And we asked the judge to remove the trustees. The judge said, after a trial, we had a trial that took place, how, how long was that trial, a month?
Yeah, three, four weeks.
Three, four weeks, a month long in St. Paul, in front of Judge Awesome. He, um, he removed one. But the one he removed was the one who we believed acted most offensively. That person's name, uh, was Mr. Lip Schultz. And he is no longer a trustee. Now you should know that Otto Brimmer, I want y'all to all to know who Otto Brimmer is. This dude immigrated from Germany, he was an immigrant. He was an immigrant, right? So we, yeah, as I said, immigrants do good things for this country. He was a very sharp businessman, he started building, he started banks. And he set up banks that lent money to the agricultural community here in the, and, and, and he made a lot of money. But unlike some of the financially well-to-do people of today, he thought he should do good and do well. And he set up a charitable trust, which as you just said, has done a lot of good for a lot of people over the course of years. And the trust owns the bank, Brimmer Bank. So it's not, so usually banks have their, have their, have their own foundations. No, this is a foundation that owns a bank. Other way around, right? And that bank lends money in communities where a lot of commercial banks don't wanna operate because they don't make that money. But this bank says, we, we stick around because, you know, Farmer Bob, who's got his corn and his beans out there, uh, they had us farming this family for three, four, five, six generations. We wanna see them be able to put their, get their crop. And he, and they, you cater to the agricultural community, but not only the agriculture, agricultural community. The charitable trust mission is to alleviate poverty. And so many, so often we act like poverty is a disease. No, poverty is a condition that people are living in that the rest of us should help them get out of. In the Bible, it says, the spirit of the Lord is upon me, I've come to preach good news to the? Poor. We should all be in solidarity with the poor and try to help. And Otto Brimmer, the man, was. And, uh, that was many generations ago, but he, when he, he, you know, we all die one day. And he had three people be the trustees of the charitable trust. And then they were his financial advisors and his lawyers. Then they all died, then they appointed their kids, and they all died and appointed their kids. And that's who was the trustees up, up, up until recently, and we removed one of them. We did, we tried to remove all. You may be like, well, why all? Well, because the one of them was doing bad things actively, and a lot of them. But the other two were letting them do it. Now, what is a fiduciary? If you are on board, you have a responsibility to look out for the institution. And even if you're not doing wrong, you can't let another trustee do wrong either. You gotta do something about it. It is your responsibility to do something about it. And they did not. But the judge said, we're gonna let them two slide and we're gonna get rid of the one. He then appealed up the decision. And the judge, and the Court of Appeals said, the AG's right, you're out. So now they appointed another guy who is the, I think he's like, uh, the president of Creighton Durham Hall High School. And, uh, so, you know, I mean, at least he's not just born into the job. At least he has some sense of what it means to earn a living, you know? And I'm not putting out people who have generational wealth, I wish I did, right? But, but I'm saying that I think it is, I think it is good to have some perspective of somebody who, you know, has to show up to work every day or else there's nothing in the refrigerator. Uh, anybody, uh, Yola?
Oh, yeah, I was just gonna say, there's some questions from students, I feel like I've shortchanged you.
Hi, thank you for, uh, like, being here so much. Uh, my, my name, thank you. Uh, my, my name is, my, 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 my name is, my name is Bella. And I'm a, and I'm a, and I'm a senior here. I'm going into public health and maybe more specifically health policy.
Nice to meet you, Bella.
Nice to meet you. And I kind of, and I kind of want to go back to the merger that, that, that we were talking about because I think it has some very interesting public health aspects in there. So as we're talking about the, as we're talking about the, as we're talking about the, as we're talking about the potential of, of like, of this merger, how, uh, like, may this, how, uh, like, may this affect our, like, how maybe this affect our, like, Medicare and our, like, Medicaid patients as well as our, as well as our uninsured patients?
It's a great question, Bella. So it's not immediately obvious how it will affect them. But that's one of the things we're asking. How will it, how, what happens to charity care, for example? But it's charity care. Nonprofit hospitals get to not pay taxes and get other benefits. In exchange, they're supposed to help people who need help. Not just pay customers, they also have to do some what they call uncompensated care for people who can't pay. In underserved areas. I can tell you what, what, what the system we have right now in healthcare. Minnesota has one of the best healthcare systems in the country. And we still got problems. I'm telling you, but there are parts of northern Minnesota where if your loved one needs a psychiatrist because they're schizophrenic or suicidal, you may have to wait four or five months for a psychiatrist visit. Is this gonna be a better or worse, right? Um, this is a very serious, and this is one of the things we're trying to explore. Now, when it comes to Medicaid, Medicaid, just for everybody to know, Medicare generally is what, is the healthcare you get when you get to be an older American, sixty-five or above. Medicaid is the healthcare you get if you are a low-income person. Some people are dual-eligibles, of course, right? Now, not everybody take, not everybody takes that, right? And so, uh, how, will, will the merger impact, uh, patients who need this sort of, who need, you know, who need, who can, who need healthcare, who are low-income and can only, and only have Medicaid support? So the, the real issue is, um, that's why we're doing the investigation, Bella. And I promise you, these are questions we will make sure that we get answered. So you keep it up, okay? She's studying health, uh, public health, give her a hand, y'all.
Otto?
Hey there.
Hi, my name is Shara Aden. I am the executive director of Central Minnesota Community Empowerment Organization. I have two unrelated questions. Uh, since we're talking about healthcare, the first one I wanted to ask is, and I think we've had this discussion last time you visited us out in the community, is there's a, there's a bit of concern with such a care. And I think this has been something that has been known throughout the community for some time, the way they treat, uh, communities of color here in central Minnesota. And I think this has been something that has been known throughout the community for some time, the way they treat communities of color here in central Minnesota, as well as the lack of choice. Because any hour and a half or two hours, you can drive in any direction and all you get is central care. So I wanted to ask you what you think of that and what is happening on that situation. My second question is, in the community, we have seen quite a bit of targeted lending through contract for deed. There's been some interest in our community to purchase homes. And what we have seen is with that interest came what we see as shock loans, which are given our communities contract for deed and nothing in return. If they miss those five to ten thousand dollar monthly payments, they lose thousands, whatever savings that they have had. So if you're doing anything about that and if you've heard of anything of it, thank you.
Yeah, on the issue of these contract for deed, we have had some meetings about this issue with some community leaders. Just for everybody else to know, in Islam, in Islamic religion, there are rules around interest. And so some people are reluctant to take out a loan. And so what I'll turn to them for them is contract for deed. But the laws around contract for deed are a heck of a lot less protective than a mortgage, right? Now, there are some companies that do Islamic finance or no-interest finance, you know? And they're out there, but there's not too many in Minnesota. I think I know of one in Anara, Michigan, and then there's some companies that do it. But if you believe that these contracts for these companies are setting up unrealistic terms and then when people miss or are late on a payment, they just take all their money, then that could be a problem. I can't take, as I stand here, whether it violates any Minnesota laws, but I can tell you that I can see how this could be a real problem, particularly for people who are vulnerable, who don't want to use the interest system, don't want to borrow money, can be vulnerable to have, to putting up large sums of money that they have saved and losing it. And the redemption periods for a mortgage are very different from the redemption periods for contract for deed. There's a lot of protection you get with a mortgage and foreclosure system that you just don't get with contract for deed. So why don't you get a card from Keya and then we'll get to a conversation about that. Now, you asked me about... Oh, yeah, that's right. You know, it's a little dry out there, you know what I mean?
But I have the same issue.
Yeah, so on the central care issue, look, choice is better than none, right? I mean, but it's, whether you're talking about internet service or healthcare, it's better to have more players in the market than fewer, right? It's a real issue. And I can tell you that one thing that the AG's office does not do is to starve healthcare companies. That's outside of our purview. But there are some, I'm gonna tell you this, there were some folks in Keya. We should put them in touch with those folks in Albert Lee.
Yeah.
There's some folks in Albert, see, now Albert Lee used to be serviced by mail, you know? And then they closed a hospital and they closed, and they didn't close everything, but they closed like obstetrics and they closed a few other things. And what the folks did there is they set up their own, and now they got a pretty, pretty good clinic going. And so I can't tell you exactly everything about it, but I can put you in touch with these folks in Albert Lee who took some initiative to have an alternative to the only game in town. So if you're interested in talking to them, I would strongly urge you to do that because I think that it is, it is not good if you just got one company, no choice, and that's not good.
Thank you. I'm gonna take my privilege or whatever you want to call it as host. I'm gonna give the last question to the person I walked right past at the very beginning. The last question, and then I'd like to have you have a minute to also to be able to say a few words.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney General for being here. I wanted to ask you more about the young people that are here. I'm the St. John's Culture for College Downs. We got Climate Justice Club, the Student Senate, McCrady Center, Campus Ministry is here today. People that are going into politics from all walks of life. Where is, where do you see the role of young people in Minnesota politics today and where do you see it going in the future?
Look, no matter what age or what era you're talking about, young people have always been the drivers of social change. I met a guy who, when he passed away, I bet he was probably eighty-five or eighty-six. But when he started working in politics and in civil rights, he was eighteen, seventeen, eighteen years old. His name was John Lewis. Anybody ever heard of John Lewis? John Lewis was the mentee of Martin Luther King. And when he met, and John Lewis wrote a letter to Martin Luther King, he said, "I'm interested in working on civil rights, sir," and wrote him a letter to that effect. And then Martin Luther King wrote him back and said, "Well, show up in my office on this date and time." And then young John Lewis showed up and Martin Luther King said, "Oh, there's the boy from Troy." Because he was from Troy, Alabama. And I got a chance to know John Lewis pretty good because we were in Congress together. And I'm telling you, this man has been beaten in the head, water holes, brains beat out. They burned a bus he was on because he was challenging segregation laws down south. I mean, John Lewis went through the meat grinder. And a sweeter, better disposition you would never meet. The man truly was filled with love when he died. I'm sure there's a heaven he had to go to because this guy was so kind and at peace. But when he started, he was a kid, or what I would call a kid. And when those kids went to the, they went to that lunch counter, black and white. They got beat, had cigarettes put out by bullies, and they came back, you know? And so young people have always been dissatisfied with the status quo. And it's that dissatisfaction which propels us forward. And I always encourage older people, don't be upset with the young people because they, you tell them that they can't do it and it's never been done. Well, maybe they just will do it because they don't know it can be done. And so this is the kind of, this is what young people bring. We need, we need intergenerational engagement. Because young people, older people have a little bit of wisdom and experience. Young people have that vigor and that energy and that dissatisfaction. You bring the two together and now maybe we can make some, we can go forward. What we can't do is not respect the positions that each of us come with. Young people should not say, "You old people don't know nothing. Y'all don't know nothing. Your time is over." Don't do that because then older folks might tell you something that can help you. And older folks don't say, "Your kids don't know nothing." In my day, let me tell you how we did it. Don't do that either because in your day, you was just like them. And so I would say, young people are our hope. Young people are the leading edge of the green movement. And I'm really grateful for them. I've had young people mad at me because they think I should be moving faster. And I'm like, well, I'm gonna try, but I'm gonna do my best, but I am absolutely listening to you. So, look, young people sometimes, you know, are impatient. They can get a little boisterous and a little loud and maybe not that polite, you know? But we need their energy. And so I think that, you know, look at Greta Thunberg, you know, look at all these young, look at Malala. You know, shot in the face by people who in practice, they even thought a little girl shouldn't be able to read. Girls shouldn't read. She got, she took a bullet for that, the idea that, yes, they can read. Think about that. So I want you guys, you young people, never get cynical. And never let anybody tell you that your dreams are gonna die when you get to be thirty. It's not true. They die if you let them die. They'll die if you help them die. But they don't die just because you turn thirty. The most youthful guy I know is a man named Mahmoud Khati, and I think he's about ninety. And this guy is on fire, man. Every day I see him. He's got some crazy idea he wants to try. So, so young people, thank God for you, but understand that youth is a chronology, but it's also a attitude. And all of us, no matter how old, can keep that youthful spirit, and we should, right? All right.
Well, thank you, Mr. Attorney General. What did you like to have?
I just want to urge everybody to travel home safely. I want to thank everybody for coming tonight and asking your questions.
I have a question.
Okay. Well, can I ask?
Why don't we do it one-on-one in Portland?
Well, I was hoping to ask the question. But anyway, I go out publicly to do my own little survey. And I'm always asking people if they've heard of the World Economic Forum, Great Reset, Bush Swap, and the Global Agenda for a New World Order. And I'm amazed, most people haven't heard of it, so.
Well, you guys can talk about that.
Should really check it out.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, everybody, I hope everybody travels home safe tonight. Thank you all for coming out. Thanks for bringing your ideas. Thanks for asking your questions. And again, keep that youthful spirit. Keep your mind a little bit open to somebody else's point of view. Take care, y'all.